All right, folks, it's six o'clock. We'll get started with our regular city commission meeting. And, uh, ma'am, would you do the prayer? And, uh, Ms. Jekic, would you do the pledge, please, ma'am? Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, with which it is founded, with which it is governed.
Listen, ma'am.
Father, we just thank you that we can come together today, um, and listen to what you have for this city. And we just pray that you would help us in our decision making to do what is the best for the city and the residents here, and, um, that you would allow us to listen while on the streets. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ladies. Eat slowly.
For the minute.
Roll call, please, ma'am.
Have this Cranberry?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
And Ms. Johnson?
Here.
All right. We have, uh, two sets of minutes to approve, one from our study session of the 11th and one from our regular meeting of the 16th. And once you've had an opportunity to review, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the study session from May 11th and the regular meeting from May 16th.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Five awards presentations, mayor's appointment to the Murray Mount Pleasant Board of Zoning Appeals. We've got Lisa Cole, which is expiring, and we're going to ask that she be, uh, put back on there for three years, and she has agreed to. And the new member will be Chris Irvin. Chris also serves on the, uh,
Historic Commission.
Historic Commission, and his would be a three-year appointment as well. So entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion to accept Chris Irvin and Lisa Cole to be back on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Unfinished business. Ordinance 2023-1110. This is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2022-1096 appropriating the revenues and expenses for operating the city from the date beginning July the first of 2022 and ending June 30th of 23.
Mayor and commissioners, uh, you've read, you approved this, uh, um, uh, first reading last month, and I'm gonna let you just repeat what you just said to me. The only change in this since last month is
The expenditures on the general fund.
Correct.
So, that, and it was not an actual, like, the numbers are all the same. It was just one of the formulas wasn't pulling down, so I want to review the numbers. You just have to amend that.
That's correct.
Otherwise, no other changes.
All right.
Make a motion, approve it, as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Make it.
Well, excuse me. This is a public hearing. Anyone care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect it. No one cared to? Now entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance 2023-1110.
Pass it, Jenny.
Pass it.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2023-1111. This again is a public hearing and a final reading. Ordinance of the City of Mount Pleasant adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the year beginning July the first of 2023 and ending June 30th of 2024. And I would just like to take a second and thank everybody for all their work. And Shifra, you have made this totally, Phillip and Kate and a whole lot of other folks. Thank y'all. Been a good one. So, any questions with the commission? I know we've kind of talked through this more than once, and each of you, uh, that cared to met privately with them, so.
Mayor and commissioners, so the only change from the first reading on this one is we remove the $250 that, uh, we're not funding the transit, um, that all, you all agree to not fund that. Uh, we took e-citations out because we're also gonna, this evening, have a resolution to remove that. And then, uh, you all know that we're putting the sanitation in its own revenue fund. So those are the changes since you've looked at this first time. I miss anything on that?
And there's resolutions for both of the changes.
The trolley or whatever.
It's in there. It's probably in there.
It is in here. Yeah, 'cause we're gonna look at that over in here, 'cause this, the way this did is tonight, everybody better get ready, 'cause she pretty long. Uh, but yeah, that, the $123 on sanitation, so. Uh, any other comment from the commissioners? Hearing none. Again, this is a public hearing. Um, anyone in the audience care to speak on the new budget? Please let the minutes reflect. No one cared to speak? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept ordinance 2023-1111.
You have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
I'm not good at this. I haven't turned this duty over to her yet. That's why I hesitate every time we do this. Ms. Cranberry?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, no. And I guess, as I said from Thursday, it's just hard for me to vote for the $6,000 on the trolley when I think our citizens, you know, deserve more than this, because this is not gonna be done again next year, from what I understand, in the county nor the city of Columbia. Gave anything to this as well.
All right.
Uh, Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Three to two. Thank you, ma'am. The ordinance 2023-1112. Again, this is a public hearing and the final reading on it, an ordinance to amend Title 17 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to refuge and trash disposal by modifying the sanitation rates.
And mayor commissioners, there is no change in this ordinance since first reading at all. And, uh, we, the recommended increases, as we did share with you in the study session, that this still does leave us with a deficit, but we really feel like that we need to get some time to see what this ordinance brings in in the way of revenue.
And the rates again, Kate, or what? The new rate?
The new rate for, uh, just individual can pickup is 21 a month, and if you're a tax relief customer, it's 1980. And an additional can is 12. And then the, um, dumpsters are kind of all over the map, but the, the main thing there is we're charging for each pickup.
Yeah, each pickup.
Yeah.
Now, we charging for each residence? Even if nobody's in them?
Yes, unless, in the ordinance, it says that they can put in writing that, that house is not occupied, and it has to be approved.
Okay, okay.
Like, I guess what you're saying, the two or three that have to chew away, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I'd just like to say, mayor, this is something I don't like to do, but it's some, it's just like our water and sewer. There's some, sometimes, you know, we have to do something, whether we like it or not.
Yep. And it breaks us even, and it's very, very small now.
Bill, we keep talking about wanting to pave roads and stuff, and this is eating our general fund.
Yeah. Eating it up. All right. Any comments, more comments from the commission? All right, it's a public hearing. Anybody care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect. No one cared to speak? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Cranberry?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Five zip. All right. Monthly report from the mayor. Only thing I've got is we had a nice event yesterday. I hate the weather, kind of got us hit towards the end, but it was a nice event, and, uh...
Yeah, but, I don't know if there was, that, no one made a motion. Second, the mayor just said, roll call.
Roll call.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance 2023-1112.
I'm trying to get this.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Do we need to do a roll call vote over again?
That's all in favor, I think we'll be fine.
All right, cool. Uh, but again, thanks to everybody that participated and helped out up there yesterday, and, uh, it was a nice event. Nice event. So that's all I've got. Uh, music on the porch was great. Phillip, Andrew and his band were fantastic. Uh, it was a lot of fun.
Big crowd.
Big crowd.
Yeah.
Big crowd. So it was a, it was a great event. All right. Monthly financial and budget report, please, ma'am.
I emailed all the reports out Friday, along with the budget documents, along with the budget amendment documents. Um, I did change the cash report, um, and that's not in the printout. I had just emailed those documents. The cash report, I changed it because I think in the past, when we were sending you the reports, it, we would, uh, generate just a generic report out of the software that would just be all the cash and cash equivalents for the city. So that included your regular checking accounts, regular savings accounts, any CDs and investments that the city had. So what I did on the report that you all received on Friday is I generated that report, and I took off any expenditures that you all have either are already obligated, or we've already put them in savings that by requirements, we have to keep in fund balance for, for fund balance requirements, or, like I said, capital projects that you've already obligated, and they're sitting in separate funds. So that actually gives you a real snapshot of that. That bottom line number is really where we're standing, and we have for operations. Now, in the general fund, it looks good right now, but we've already surpassed most of our, this is gonna be the best time that we'll see, and we're not gonna be bringing a lot of revenue into that account till next year, when property taxes start coming in. So as we watch those reports, I just want you all to see that the general fund, you will see it go down over the next few months, probably, just because we still have to function like we normally do. Purchasing has been stopped since, uh, the middle of May. So our May and June reports, you won't see a lot of expenditure, especially June would probably be our slowest month, hopefully, and we've been trying to control that, and I think everybody's done a great job of, um, making sure they had all their ordering done in, uh, the month of May before we shut down. Um, and then the rest of the financials, I think right now, I'm going to try to start working on June 30th financials for y'all for July. Funds look good. Funds look okay. Um, we're getting close to closing the books, and June, June 30th is just around the corner. But I'm always available if y'all have any questions for me.
All right. Any questions for Shifra?
Thank you, Ms. Shifra.
Uh, Ms. Really, anything you want to add? I, we, I attended the power system meeting. They asked me to, 'cause they were going through their budget. It's their budget here. Anything you want to add to what they did at that meeting?
Oh, we passed the budget.
Yeah. And they're doing the same. I mean, everybody's having, we're in an extremely questionable time with pandemic money running out. A lot of things like that are getting ready to happen, so. But it was a good meeting. They got everything passed, and everything was done. All right. Entertain a motion for approval of Ms. Shifra's report.
I make a motion to accept a monthly financial budget report.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
Um, mayor commissioners, the only thing I wanted to bring up, if you remember, in May, uh, uh, the commission passed, um, approval of the third amendment to the gas contract for Landmark. And in that, you also stated that if there were any minor changes that need to be made, I had the ability to do that. We basically simplified the contract in a couple areas of language, but it has been signed by Landmark, and it has been signed by the city. Anything else on that, Corey, that you want to add? The substance of it did not change.
No, the substance did not change. Um, we notified Landmark that their deposit would need to increase.
I have that written down to say that, too.
And, uh, their gas increase hasn't actually happened yet. So, um, my thoughts would be that their gas deposit would increase when their gas use, usage actually increased.
Yeah, when that, when that furnace hits online, that's when it'll, that's when we'll see it. Okay? Anything, anybody else on that? All right. Special report from other departments. Wastewater.
I do not have my barge report in front of me. I could look at somebody else's, yeah. Thank you. I'm in front of me, by agenda. Um, we're in the process of completing the close. I know that seems like we've been saying that for months, but the sewer trunk line project is complete. Rainy Street Sewer Improvement, they're still, uh, uh, providing some middles to barge for review. And we'd had several out there, again, at the, uh, wastewater treatment plant, when we had the state director of USDA out there to see the progress and to take a picture with her. Um, and the last time we were out there, I think, was three weeks ago, and you wouldn't believe what's changed in three weeks. There's walls up inside, and there's electrical conduits from the ground, and it was a little bit smellier.
Yeah. What's that?
But quite a bit, um, quite a bit of progress since then. And then the final one on here, the Lagoon Project, is, uh, complete and paid for.
Good, good, good. Gas system?
No report on the gas system. Everything right now is going fine.
All right, good. All right, new business. Ordinance 2023-1113, this is a first reading. Ordinance to amend Title 18, water and sewers for the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code by adding a new chapter four to enact an access fee upon new water customers.
Mayor and commissioners, I know we've talked about this a couple months at study sessions, but, uh, Corey's done a good job of putting this together, and we've met with staff again on it today. I'm gonna let her go into any kind of detail that she needs to, following what she talked about already in the study session. But then the one following it is the same type of ordinance, but is for sewer. This one's for water. New customers only.
I tried to, um, really type out exactly what we're doing in the body of the ordinance. So, um, as you know, y'all run a water system, and you have a duty to, um, charge rate fees and charges, uh, for the services and facilities that would, charged by the water system. And you're supposed to do that in a non-discriminatory way, and so the system will be self-supporting. This is a access fee to new customers only, and the goal of this access fee is to equitably recover capacity-related capital costs from current and new customers to achieve equity between the different generations of ratepayers. So the, this charge is only for new connections, but the goal is fairness between new and old customers. Um, we, as Kate said, have talked about this amongst staff and with engineers, and tried to calculate this correctly, um, based off of the equity that's in the system. And what you have in front of you, the only change that we've discussed making, and that would be on second reading, would be when the access fee is charged, and we think the best time for that fee would be on permitting, rather than, we had it kind of open-ended in the draft, but we feel like there needs to be a time that we all know that that's when the, that the fee is charged. So that's the only change that we've discussed that I think we would change between now and second reading, if it passes today.
Okay.
Corey, I'd just like to, I guess, for my, for me, to make sure, I know that most of this money right here is 3,500. I'll be from, yes, builders or whatever passing the money on. But me, as an individual, now if I go buy a lot in the city limits and I build a house, this 3,500 dollars will be applied.
Yeah. For water.
Yeah, and also.
Absolutely. Or we'll be coming back with gas at a later day.
Yeah. Again, they, for those of you that have not attended the meetings, and this, we're trying to make this equitable for the current members of the community. Uh, we didn't see the current members going up on your, on your fees in order for the new builders to come in here and use our services. They need to pay their fair share. So that's, that's what, in a nutshell, is we're getting ready to get through the first reading.
Wait a minute, ma'am. I've been living here all my life. Does that mean I'm a new?
No. I said new. New. I know you are.
Maybe new connection is the...
Yeah, that may be a better way to put it, a new connection. That's a better way. Thank you, Corey. That's why we got an attorney here.
But wait a minute, since y'all said that, I do have a course. We're cha, we're charging it when they connect, okay?
When they get a permit to build.
When they get a permit to build a house. But what if they sell the house and somebody else moves in it? Is there another connection fee like this, or just a reconnect fee to the water?
No, that, so this is...
It's just a tap, if you tap into it, if you buy another...
There's still a tap fee, but this isn't a, this is a, this is an access fee that would be applied.
Right.
Yes, it would be paid again.
Okay.
It, it's for the, the new connection.
Okay.
And the reason we talked about putting a building permit time is because the cost of the access fee would be...
With contractors.
Would be built, would be determined by what's being built.
Okay.
So we, that, we value everything right now on a
Single-family unit.
Single-family unit.
Right.
But we use that as a multiplier for different types of uses. And so we figured, when you come to get a building permit, you have to tell them exactly what you're building.
Okay.
And then we use that to calculate the access fee.
Okay, the building permit will not be issued if the access fee has not been paid.
Been paid.
Okay.
But no, it's a one-time thing per connection.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion, or this go to second reading?
Make a motion to accept ordinance 2023-1113.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2023-1114. This is basically the same thing, except it is for new sewer customers.
New sewer construction. New instructions for sewer.
Or anything, it's same thing.
It's exactly the same. Um, the only difference is it, it's for sewer. Um, there, also, we're talking about a, uh, water use guide. In water, we're talking about a sewer use guide. So you can also anticipate two new resolutions coming before you in July. Um, so they're the same. They're just separated, because we would keep the, the fees separate.
That's right. And we discussed, too, afterwards, is Shifra was gonna set up another line item account just to house that money, to know where we are all the time, so.
Again, Corey, thank you for doing that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I have a same course. What if it's someone that already has a house, but it's not on sewage, and they're going to tap into sewage?
That, then they would pay it.
They would pay the fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept ordinance 2023-1114.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2023-1115. Again, this is a first reading. An ordinance to terminate electronic citation regulations and fees for the city of Mount Pleasant, the police department and municipal court.
Mayor and commissioners, as I stated in the study session, we learned that, uh, we renewed this after five years, and the, so did a lot of other cities, but the, um, state says that we cannot renew it after five years. So we passed this by ordinance years ago, and to undo that, we have to pass this ordinance. So we'll stop collecting the e-citation fees. We've already stopped collecting, but this is gonna just back it up in writing.
Any questions? Hearing none, this was a first reading. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we pass ordinance 2023-115.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna get into the resolutions. Resolution 2023-18, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Murray Museum of Local History.
And mayor and commissioners, what we've done historically, and that's what they've requested again, is we pay the heating bills not to exceed $1,500.
All right. Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2023-18.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-19, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Community Development Corporation slash Main Street.
Mayor and commissioners, this is the same funding amount that we funded for, uh, as long as I've been here, at least seven to 10 years. And next year, I would anticipate the request would come from Main Street, 'cause the CDC is gonna, uh, be dormant while we kick off the, the Main Street program.
Yep. Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2023-19.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-20, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Senior Citizens.
And mayor and commissioners, that, the senior citizen, the senior group, did ask for $500 more in the past. We funded a thousand, but what we have passed in the budget is $1,500.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2023-20.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-21, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, adopting a cyber security plan.
Mayor and commissioners, as I mentioned at the study session, we're required by law to have a cyber security plan by July 1st of this year. So, uh, Michael Haywood, uh, spent some time and put a lot of effort into this, and we sent off, uh, our plan to MTS to make sure that they were in agreement with what we had put together, and they have. So, um, we're ready to pass this. It might be something that gets tweaked each year, but we're ready to have it in place for July 1st.
Okay. Any questions on that? I don't think you can be too careful anymore. Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2023-21.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I second it, and thank you, Michael.
Yeah.[1546.76]
Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-22, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, adopting a dispatch plan with Murray County 911.
And Mayor Commissioners, I think we've talked about this for quite some time, including or with our budget, um, meetings, but, uh, we're transferring, right now Murray County 911 is doing our night dispatch. Now we're transferring day and night. And, uh, there'll be another resolution on here where we're purchasing different software to, uh, use. We were going to change anyway, but this software use, uh, is what works best with the Murray County 911 system. So right now you're just approving the, uh, agreement with 911.
Correct. And that's effective July 1st, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2023-22.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-23, resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, approving Southern Software as a service agreement for the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Mayor Commissioners, we've, uh, been using Tyler and Tyler is, has been very expensive. And as I mentioned just previously, that this Southern Software is what 911 currently uses. So we will, the first year is the same as the payment that we make to Tyler, but over the next couple of years, we'll be saving money each year.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor? Nope. Entertain a motion? I'm trying to get ahead myself.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2023-23.
Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-24, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant rescinding resolution 2022-21 and moving funds from the Mount Pleasant General Fund to a sanitation special revenue fund. That's a tease.
Mayor Commissioners, we talked about, about this a little bit when we, uh, voted on the budget earlier, but this is setting up a revenue fund specifically for sanitation. Anything else you want to add to that, Shippa? And that's the budget that was presented to you.
It's in a deficit.
Yeah.
Yes, it, 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 right now we still anticipated operating at a deficit, yet a much smaller deficit.
That's correct. All right, entertain a motion?
I make a motion to we pass the resolution 2023-24.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-25, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, setting a fixed asset policy.
Mayor Commissioners, currently our, um, dollar amount for a fixed asset is at $2,500 and this resolution changes it to $5,000.
Yep, and it gives us specifics of the depreciation schedule in there too, which is nice to see. Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
I make a motion to accept resolution 2023-25.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-26, a resolution revising the employee compensation plan for the city of Mount Pleasant.
Mayor Commissioners, in the packets that you received, we highlighted two changes in the, in the actual compensation plan and, uh, both were to address the needs in our building, planning and zoning codes office. We have the director at the same level as other directors and we've added the position of building inspector. Um, that individual starts on Monday, the 26th. And Mr. Brooks is in the audience here tonight, our new director of planning and zoning and codes.
For those of you that might not have missed, met Chris, Chris is sitting back here and he's going, he's a welcome addition.
He says he's coming back tomorrow.
Well, that's a good start. That's a good start. Oh, that's good. Any questions from the commission?
Glad to have you.
Amen. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2023-26.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Downtown bid award.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, as you know, uh, we were very disappointed when we opened up the bids on May 11th. Uh, the engineers, um, uh, it determined that this bid would be just under 3 million in that range. And as you know, it was $6,175,000 and it was over $4 million of the anticipated costs. So what I have here now, after your vote, is a letter from the mayor to the state saying that we've rejected the, the bid amount and we asked them to concur with it. I have a quick question for you, Corey. I meant to ask you before we started was, um, a way to keep this moving, can we say that we reject this bid and authorize the city to move forward once we have T-Dot? Yeah. And I've already reached out to a couple contractors and we do have the link to send to these contractors to show it to them now to say, you know, please take a look at this and see if you're interested in bidding that. And we got a couple people looking at it right now. We're hoping that we can be successful with that approach.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
But we can't do nothing until the state.
Correct.
And that might take a while.
I don't know how long.
Yeah, they, well, they told me it would be a certain amount of time and I said, we'll see.
Yeah. All right, any other questions on that? We've talked about it at length. As a matter of fact, that's what I talked to the folks today about too, because their concerns. Uh, so entertain a motion to reject the downtown bid.
I make a motion to reject the downtown bid award.
A second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Can we add to that, that we're able to move forward once we get, with another bid, once we get concurrence from T-Dot?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Cleaning bid award.
Uh, yes, I mentioned, uh, at the study session that we had reviewed all these bids and there's just a, a lot of information here. I do have the bids in front of me if anybody wants to take a look at it, but our recommendation is the low bid and see how they do. And the name of that firm is Chano, C-H-A-N-O, and Sons Incorporated. And that's who we recommend at this point. And then if that doesn't work, then Ms. Aldridge says you do it. Does anybody want to see the actual bids?
Yeah, they were.
Okay, good. So basically they're on the second page. All the way to the bottom.
Is there a timeframe in which, if we're not happy?
Yes, I mean, you could, I think it's 30 days notice. We can, they, they can get out and we can get out, but, uh, and I, I anticipate that may happen at that price, but we're going to give it a shot.
We had the same thing, I think it was before you became on, we had the same problem with, uh, uh, pest control and it did work.
Right.
All right, entertain a motion to award the cleaning bid.
To Chano and.
To, yeah, however you pronounce that.
Chano and Sons. Make a motion, we reward the cleaning bid to Chano and Sons Incorporated, as recommended by staff.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Motion carries. Write offs.
Uh, Shippa placed all that in front of you. I think you've all given it right back and we typically vote on this, don't we? We just.
I think we do, don't we, Corey?
Well, yeah, we've got it on here.
Anybody got, of course, it's private information, but anybody got any questions? It's a very low number and it's a very small group of people for a change, so.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, nice to see. That, that, that's a lot of work by that staff, though. Let's not forget that. And they've been making phone calls now and they're doing what you gotta do to try to collect it before it hits there. So I want to compliment them.
And they see you apply after.
Yeah.
$735.32.
Small number. All right, entertain a motion that we approve the write-offs.
I make a motion that we approve the write-offs.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. The last thing we got is general comments from citizens and no one signed up. Please let the minutes reflect that and here's the signing sheets. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
I'm coming.
Move, move, move. This man.
Uh, first of all, uh, I want to thank everybody that came out all weekend to help for Juneteenth. Uh, Saturday, Friday night, we had over 185 people up there. Uh, Saturday, we had the healthy van in Merrick County disaster up there. Uh, telling them about disasters and how they can get grants and we had about 30 to come through there. And then we had a grand turnout yesterday. Also, um, especially Ms. Kathy from Park and Recreation, because she's new and she was a broker. She stayed with me all night and all day, in two days. Yeah, so she had to work yesterday. That's the only reason why she wasn't there. But there was a young lady, I forgot her name, from CrossFit Bank yesterday. She came to help out. And I was, uh, thankful for her also. And my reason for voting no on the budget was because of Park and Recreation. I built it stubborn years. Our five-year strategic plan said by this time we were going to have a shelter, a basketball court and playground equipment. We have playground equipment, thanks to the merchants. Uh, and that's it. And I know it's coming and it's on the way because I keep hearing that, but it's also why I ran for commission. And my issue is, you know, someone came to me and complained that they were told we were getting the basketball court and we'll see what happens to that. We're going from there to see what happens from there. We don't make plans like that for a park because anything that happens, you can't fault the community. And they have two tree to trees planted in the middle of the basketball field. But I appreciate your help. Thank y'all.
Anybody else? Try to always do that at the work session now, just so it moves through here.
Well, I didn't have something to say.
Sure.
Um, when you go to the community events, and I wasn't able to be there this weekend because I worked off the end of day and stuff, but, um, appreciate all the work we went in and doing that and putting that on. Um, it has been really nice the last two weeks to be able to reassure people because of Shippa, everything all of you already do and Chris coming on and all you guys back there. Um, I feel like in, big football girls also, the team's coming together.
Yep.
And it feels good and it, and it makes people excited that, that I'm able to be really positive and say, hey, you know, this is, we're getting there. And I think whatever we can do to help, um, it's very confusing to, to the citizens about Main Street and what's going on. So as much as we can give the information that we're doing our best and everybody's working hard and it's just a lot of things out of our control, but anyways, I just want to thank everybody. I know it's a lot of work and we're getting.
Yeah, I, I would stick to that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, uh, it, it feels, feels better, doesn't it? It just kind of got, got that vibe off of it.
Especially Main Street because they keep saying what we do with the money, but you have to keep telling them that it has to go through a process.
All right, now entertain a motion?
I make a motion for a.
You got a motion in a second. All those in favor? All right, everybody have a great rest of the evening.